The City Council Committee of the Whole will meet on Wednesday, December 1st, 2022, at 6:15 PM or 6:35 right now for the purpose of discussing City Council rules and orders and to discuss carrying matters forward into the next year in person in City Council Chambers, 93 Washington Street, second floor, and via remote participation in accordance with the Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022. In-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, and the public may also participate, listen to, and/or view this meeting while in progress via the remote participation platform Zoom through any one of the following ways. Please click on the link found in the agenda, password 870433, or telephone 853-5257 or 888-4754499, webinar ID 811-90555308. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so on matters not requiring a public hearing, we will post on the City of Salem's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. The City Council Committee of the Whole met in Council Chambers on December 1st, 2022, at 6:15 PM for the purpose of discussing the matters listed below, number 633, discussing updates to rules and orders, and to discuss carrying matters forward. Notice of this meeting was posted on November 21st, 2022, at 2:19 PM. Everyone is in attendance, and we are going to start with the rules and start with some edits that were suggested last time, and I have some language that has gone through the city solicitor, and so we can figure out what we want to accept and what we don't. So, very quickly, this included the gender neutral. So, if we want to take that as one motion to accept the changes, and that went all the way through the document.
So, is that a good section?
Yep, yes, yes, it's in red in front of you. So, all the gender neutral stuff, and then, starting with Section 1, you can see in there the, that we struck mailed or delivered to them at their residence or place of business and changed it to email to their City of Salem email address. And then, we struck the last line. That is one edit.
Do you want to take one?
Yes, please, that would be the best. Council McCarthy moves to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Dominguez. All those in favor? The motion carries, thank you. The second one was a suggestion that we change this to 50% plus one. Council Ricciardi.
Thank you, Madam President. Welcome to my brain, but this one I have a tricky issue with. Changing it to 50% at plus one, I think, is not getting us to where we want to go. So, if we have an 11-member council, which is what we are now, 50% of 11 is 5.5. Plus one is 6.5. We don't have a half-member voting, so that would actually change it to seven people. 10 people would be six, 9 people would be six. So, as much as the 50% plus one makes sense, it doesn't because we don't have half numbers, and we could really get into the weeds, and someone could challenge and say, "It's seven people for a quorum." So, we could either leave it as is and leave it at six members, or if we do like the 50%, we can, I would suggest maybe more than half, which I ran it by the city solicitor, and she said that was fine as well.
Council Cohen.
Why can't we just say majority?
Majority is more than half, yeah.
Yeah. So, I move that we say majority.
Majority.
Second.
Yes. Council Watsonfelt.
Thank you, Council President. Quick question. Do we need to then define majority, or is there a clear mutual understanding of majority? Okay, thank you.
So, Council Cohen moves to change this to majority, seconded by Councilor McCarthy. All those in favor? The motion carries 11 to 0. Let's see, then we slip down to Section 3. There's gender-neutral language, changed to the president instead of he or she. I, also, rise and stand was struck to, and changed to raise their hand. Same with the second instance of it.
Move to approve the changes in Section 3.
Council McCarthy moves to approve. Council Dominguez seconds. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries 11 to 0. Section 4 is gender-neutral.
Move to approve.
Council McCarthy moves to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Dominguez. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries. Yes. Council Watsonfelt.
Thank you, President Marcello. Does it make most sense to cover ourselves in case there are any missed items, that we just make a motion for full gender-inclusive language throughout? One single motion?
I'll take that motion.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Council Watsonfelt moves to, for blanket coverage of gender-neutral language, seconded by Council McCarthy. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries, thank you. Okay, so then, down in Section 8, we added "or the city clerk" to this so that she can ask for something in writing.
Move to approve.
Moved to approve by Council McCarthy, seconded by Councilor Dominguez. All those in favor? Motion carries 11 to 0. Section 9, again, is changing rise to seek recognition.
Move to approve.
Council McCarthy moves to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Varela. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries 11 to 0. Section 10, this is the, how we're, how we're referring to the president. Council Watsonfelt.
Thank you, Council President. Move to approve.
Council Watsonfelt moves to approve. Seconded by Councilor Varela. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries 11 to 0. Okay. Okay, this is, Section 11, number 7, is also a change to the wording. Instead of "shall the main question be now put?", it was suggested that we change it to "shall the main question be voted upon?"
What was the question?
Council Ricciardi moves to approve that, and seconded by Council McCarthy. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries. Section 13 is gender-neutral, and then, this is clarification on the conflict of interest, and so, the city solicitor added this wording at the end. Instead of ending with "shall vote?", she changed it to "may vote if able to make a written disclosure, use an exemption, or invoke the rule of necessity when legally required to act." That came right from her, and she also, I want to point out, on the other note, is a link, which, all of this will be on the shared drive, but it's a link to an explanation of all of this. Council Cohen.
So moved.
Council Cohen moves to approve the language, seconded by Council Dominguez. All those in favor? Council McLean.
Thank you, Council President. So, I understand that the city solicitor created this language to be in compliance with the broader law. Are we precluded from changing our rules and making it such that we just don't allow people with conflicts of interest to vote? Is that counter to the law? Must they be allowed to if they file the paperwork?
Council McCarthy.
No, what it does is, as we all seen, common practice is if anyone has a conflict, then they rise to recuse themselves. But if there's, if there's a vote required on something, and it's such a matter that more members of the council have a conflict for whatever reason, be it, they're voting on something, they may have a family member that works for the city or something like that, then, because you have to take action on the vote, at some point, you just can't not vote on something because you can't develop enough people to vote for it, then you have to disclose. So, if that makes sense, so you can recuse yourself from the vote, assuming there's enough people left to vote, but if there isn't enough people left in the room to vote on a topic in order for something to pass or get shot down, then you have to, you have to allow someone to make up the quorum to make the vote. And the only way they can do it legally if they have a conflict is by full disclosure, identifying the conflict before. And it's very rare, I've seen it happen once, that, I forget what the issue was, it might have been around the budget, and it was, it happened to be one year that a bunch of councilors had family members that were in the school department, I think. I don't remember exactly what it was, but it happened, I've seen it happen only once. And it's only because, it's atypical. Anyone would tell you that you're, you should be cautious when you, whether or not you include yourself on a vote, but if, because of necessity of, it could be a financial matter, it could be something that needs to get passed, it needs to have a vote taken, and if you don't have enough members to be able to do it because there's enough with conflict, then they have to identify what the conflict is, and then they get allowed to vote. That's the only, that's the only reason that language is in there. For the most part, if you can recuse yourself, and the vote can still happen, then there's no reason for you to come, to exercise that, so. That's my understanding.
Council McLean.
Perfectly understood. Thank you for that explanation. So, following up on that, then, I would just sort of like to reiterate my comments when we discussed this the first time, which is, in my opinion, if somebody has a conflict of interest, unless there's a really dire circumstance, the greater good is to not have that person voting at all. So, understanding the common explanation that I just heard about the need to create a quorum, I might suggest a further edit to this and look at the language and say where it says, "Provided however, they need not vote on any question except when there is a tie vote." I would change that to, "They need not vote on any question except when there is a lack of quorum," or something like that, to address the actual issue that was just explained. I don't think a tie vote is reason enough to allow somebody with a conflict of interest to vote. I mean, if the vote goes how the vote goes, right? If you don't have it, and the matter fails, then the matter fails because you had that one less person, but it just seems to me that principally, unless there's a really dire strait, like unless we can't do business because somebody's not allowed to vote, somebody with a conflict of interest should not be voting.
Council Dominguez.
Just quickly, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to, for my own clarification, that in the event that, by any chance, we don't know exactly that we in need of any conflict of interest, what, how we alert anyone? I know, I noticed that sometime when we had in the past, some of the council, in the case of Councilor Ponoski as a former policeman, when something had to do with police, he rescued himself, but sometime, we don't even know exactly what the matter really involved, me or anyone else. But my point is, how can we alert anyone of the member of the city, of the council who is in conflict of interest or any matter? And how can we maybe, have something in language, in the language that will tell us what will be the consequences, someone notice that he's in conflict of interest, and when that life, he'd be able to recuse himself? Because sometimes, we don't know. Sometimes, things happen, and we don't know exactly. But my point is, how can we clarify that in the matter that is automatically, when known, so people automatically know exactly what to do when that case happened?
So, I think in the past, and what I've always seen, is that councilors know who they work for, who they previously worked for, what they own, I guess, what businesses they have, and it's, a lot of times, it's their responsibility to speak with the city solicitor to understand if the conflict of interest exists, and if it does, what you need to do. It is, it is knowing, knowing yourself, and how you, how, whatever the item is affects you. I mean, I, I think new councilors met with the city solicitor and discussed this stuff to understand where they may have conflict of interest. It is your responsibility to know that. Council Varela.
Thank you, President Marcello. I think this can be really clear-cut and dry. Could we possibly reference Massachusetts General Law 268A? It clearly states that if a member thinks they have a conflict of interest, they do need to do their due diligence and go through the State Ethics Commission. I think that's really clear. And they'll tell you clearly if there is a conflict, and at that point, you know before your vote, so could we possibly reference 268A in Section 13? That'd be my recommendation.
Sure.
Then, it's very simple.
Sure.
Follow the rules.
Council Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Marcello. To Council Dominguez's point, so when I worked for the city, I had to take the same conflict of interest test that everyone else does on the council, any elected official, and, you know, it's, it's pretty extensive, and we're on the honor system. So, you know, I think a bunch of us have gone to the city solicitor, I did, and was actually surprised that I had to recuse myself on short-term rentals, but I took her word for it, and I really feel like it's incumbent on the councilors to disclose, even if you don't vote, sometimes you have to disclose. I mean, there are things that you have to do to participate in this process. So, I do agree with Council McLean in this sense. I think that even though, to, you know, Council McCarthy's point, that this is a very rare thing, I'm not sure that tie is as important as the word necessity. Like, there aren't that many votes that we have to take that are time-sensitive. I think the budget may be the only one that we have, or when we have something like we're dealing with, with the ADUs, where we have a timetable, and, you know, people might have to recuse themselves on that. So, I don't think the wording has to be changed that much for this to go through, but I think we do have to allow for this, knowing that no one here is asked to recuse themselves. They all self-recuse.
Council Presnisky.
I believe, I believe the language written by the city solicitor is pretty well-written and covers probably 99.9, 9% of it. And I agree with the other councilors that we are on a, on a system, and we know when there's something brought before us, whether or not we have a conflict. And there hasn't been a case in my, that I can remember, but I know that Council McCarthy can remember one time where it may have caused a problem. I think the, I think the reason for this, and I understand Council McLean's question about integrity of the vote, and if, given an example that if one of us recuses ourselves, that leaves 10 people to vote, and if the vote is five to five, then the other, the person who recused themselves because it was a conflict comes back and votes, that vote may violate the integrity of the council vote. That one single vote would cause the spotlight on this whole city council about the vote. I can't imagine it happening, but you know what they say about Murphy's Law? So, I can, I, I think to protect ourselves, I think, I also think that if, that does happen, we're, we were able to move that matter forward to another meeting until we decide on exactly how that's done. But I would just like to see that added, that if, in case of a tie, that the person coming in, if there is a direct conflict, and that person should have had the knowledge, that council should have had the knowledge to confer with the city solicitor whether it was a direct conflict or not, because sometimes, it's really not. You recuse yourself if there's a hint of a conflict, but something is little, is strong as the budget. Sometimes, sometimes the conflict really doesn't reflect budget things. So, I just, I just would like to see something added in that it does not spotlight the integrity.
Council Ricciardi.
Thank you, Madam Chair, President. No comments on the conflict of interest, please, but I do understand the tie vote. A tie vote in a normal 10-person body vote, I've learned the hard way that a tie vote means you lost. So, I don't necessarily think that a tie vote means that then you can pull in somebody that has a conflict of interest, so I do like the idea of just changing that, except when there is lack of quorum.
Council McCarthy.
Following up on all the conversations, I appreciate them all, I understand everyone, so I guess my motion would be to refer this back to the city solicitor to amend the language to reflect what we're talking about, about the difference between quorum and a tie, because ties do lose. I mean, you're gonna have, you're gonna have situations where, even when you have a committee meeting, you only have four members, and it's two to two. Two to two is if the recommendation is to send it to the full council, where the favorable recommendation, it was two to two, well, it doesn't get set with a favorable, and then you, then you then motion again to say, send it with an unfavorable, or if it gets hung up two to two, then it stays in committee because there is no motion. So, two to two is tough, that's why we have odd numbers, but I believe the intent of this is only when you can't get a quorum, or if something would be required, like bond authorizations, or the budget, anything with like eight votes. If you don't have eight people voting on it, then you can't achieve, because people recuse themselves, then you can't even achieve the ability to vote on it to even be negative. So, I agree, I understand what everyone's saying, and like I said, I can only remember the one instance, and I can't remember what it was, but, yeah, I would just recommend that we send it back to the city solicitor to amend the language to reflect what we're talking about.
Okay. Council Watsonfelt.
I had suggested language, but I think in light of Council McCarthy's motion, I'll just second it and send my email to Beth.
Motion made by Council McCarthy, seconded by Council Watsonfelt, to get wording from the city solicitor about a lack of a quorum, and to add the MGL, the reference to the MGL 268A. Council Cohen, did you have a, okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Okay. All right, so now, we are going to slide down to Section 17, standing up, walking around while other members speak. Yes, we can all look around at all of you people. Anyways, any changes there?
No.
Seeing none. Section 18, committing, recommitting, motions and reports. Section 19, division of questions. Pretty straightforward. Section 20, deciding objection to reading of paper. Section 21, making satisfaction for violation of council rules. This, I just added the gender-neutral language. Is there any other comment here? Council McLean.
Thank you, Council President. I'm, I'm just curious what this would actually mean, right? Like, in reality, what would it mean if we retain this for the council president to say, "You have to somehow make up for what you just," like, what, what are the true implications? What is the behavior that's actually on the board here? Because if we don't know what it means, then we may as well get rid of it. Like, it just, if it doesn't mean anything, why is it there?
Council McCarthy.
It would basically mean if you were called out of order because you, if you weren't following the rules, and you were speaking out of turn, or you were being...
Bringing in personalities.
Oh, yeah, or you were engaging with another colleague directly, or you made offensive remarks towards someone else in the room. The president could call you out of order until such time as you apologize for your remarks, and then, then you could be, so technically, the way it's written, and once again, this is another rule, I've probably only seen used a handful of times, but it would be one of those ones if someone was grossly out of bounds on the behavior, is basically what it would happen to, that the council president could call out that counselor for being totally out of character, or out of whatever you want to refer to it, and basically, I don't know, it's like putting them in the corner and putting them in the chair, you go over there, sit there till you can behave, and come back up and commit. But I mean, it's, that's basically why the rule's there, is because if you have someone who's just totally being belligerent during a meeting, there is no recourse for trying to control their behavior during the meeting if they refuse to follow the rules. So, that's why it's there. It's kind of a little archaic, you would hope that everyone would try to behave, but...
It's still important, though.
It's still important, I believe.
Yeah. Council Watsonfelt.
Thank you, President Marcello. I absolutely understand why it's there, and I, and I appreciate that it's there, I think it should stay. I think, and I may have misunderstood the word for councillor's comment, but in my mind, I think it's kind of like the definition of satisfaction isn't clear, and so, is it therefore to the discretion of the president to decide whether or not it's a public apology, a dunce cap, or, you know, a 10-minute, you know, box? Like, you know, like, yeah, right, exactly, like, you know, and I guess, so the question on the table, as I understand it, is not a matter of whether or not the section stays, but rather, does the section need further definition? Do we agree that it should remain to the discretion of the president, or do we want to establish the definition of satisfaction? I honestly don't care.
I think, I think this one is okay to leave as it is, and each situation is different, and it could be something that the council decides to vote on, that they want to sanction a member for, so, I mean, you know, I think, I think this covers it. I think people need to know that they are responsible for their actions, and to keep the decorum of the meeting, and that there's rules. Yeah. Council, Council Merkel.
Thank you, President Marcello. Yes, I think it's a good idea to keep this in, and I do see that a little bit of vagueness here, but I think that gives the president a little bit more leeway to use their judgment and evaluate the situation, because no one can anticipate, you know, what this, what behavior this would have to be referring to. So, I think having a little, you know, flexibility here, if it's not, you know, specifically defined, gives the president, you know, the needed flexibility to address any issues going on, and then say, "Okay, you know, we've addressed this, you know, now, now we can move forward again." So, I do support it.
The bottom line is to keep the meeting functioning and workable and respectful. Council McCarthy.
Thank you, President Marcello. I would agree, and this goes kind of hand in hand with a rule that we modified with regards to standing. If you look back at that rule, when you're, when you're recognized by the president, it used to be you should stand, but now we're seated, but all your comments shall be directed through the chair, or in this, or the president. That way, you get back, you don't get the situation where I am looking across the aisle towards one of my fellow colleagues and calling them out on something. If I have a disagreement with what someone just said, you just make, you make all the comments through the, through the chair, so therefore, you take the conflict out of it. And if you, I think that's why this is here, it's like, you want to make sure the meeting runs, people are allowed to voice their opinions, but you have to do it in an orderly way, and if you go outside the order or the boundaries, then, they have to be, and it falls back to the president, and that's why the president's there, so I would agree to keep it.
Section 22, numbering members' seats, determining seat, changing seat. Section 23, motion for commitment precludes amendments to main. Council McLean.
It's another opportunity to show my ignorance. Thank you, Council President. What is meant by, what is the definition of commitment? What are we talking about?
Council Watsonfelt.
As I read this, it means someone can call for a vote, an immediate vote, and it is up to the, you know, you can call for an immediate vote on the most recent motion on the table before any further motion or amendment can be made.
Move the question.
Can we make it say "vote" instead of "commitment" since it's now 2022? Or "motion to call for a vote," or whatever, like, can we update it to plain language that people would understand here?
Motion to move the question, I guess we could change it to, right? Council McCarthy, we could, instead of, for commitment, motion to move...
No one's ever made a motion for commitment, it's always been...
Right.
I move to, move the question.
Yeah.
I mean, this also comes up for, I'm sorry, speaking out of term, but this also impacts Section 18, right? We just, we moved past sort of committing and recommitting. That also could be updated to plain language that, you know, any constituent could look up our rules and understand what we're talking about.
Okay. So, so Council McLean moves to change the title to "Motion to move the question precludes amendments to main."
Second.
Seconded by Council Varela. All those in favor? Motion carries 11 to 0. Section 24, motion to adjourn to land, oh, Council Watsonfelt.
I would make a follow-on motion, I guess, or should I make a, I'd be open to hearing people's thoughts, on a motion to have the city solicitor also revisit Section 18.
Oh, yeah. Section 18, yeah, I made a, I know, sorry.
Pending, okay, great. So, so far, we've got two things going back to the solicitor. I'm just keeping track. Thanks.
Okay. Section 24, motion to adjourn to lay on the table and take up from the table. Seeing none. Section 25, precedence of matters assigned to a definite time. Okay. Section 26, order of business. Section 26A, time within which matters to be submitted to the council action at regular meeting to be received by the city clerk, exception. Okay. Section 26B, time limit specified in section 26A, inapplicable when 55-hour period falls on Saturday, Sunday, or holiday, self-explanatory. Section 26C, rules for testimony during public testimony portion of regular meetings. Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Marcello. In number two, I am going to move that if more than 15 requests for public testimony, council may, by majority vote, extend to 30 minutes.
Counsel McCarthy.
It's always been an understanding that it's the discretion of the council president. It's specific to 15 minutes and if there's 15 people signed up, then it's a minute per. The, the public comment period was something that the council took up 10, 12 years ago and it was, before then, there was no public comment period. So, I mean, I understand what you're saying and there could be a lot of people, but that's under the, usually under the discretion of the council president to extend that time. We've all seen it where we've allowed people to speak longer than would normally be allowed and we've, you know, typically without objection, but, I mean, I could see where you'd want to change it from 15 minutes or the discretion of the council president.
Okay. So, I'll amend that to delete what I said and any extension would be at the discretion of the council president.
Extend, so, and it may be with extended at the discretion of the president? Counsel Watson felt.
I'm just gonna play the devil's advocate here. Thank you for recognizing me, President Marcello. I understand why this is at the president's, the discretion of the president and though I do not foresee this ever being an issue, we are here elected to represent the full body of Salem, Massachusetts, all citizens across all wards. If we ever had a president that we did not believe, the majority of us did not believe was giving fair opportunity to citizens equally around an issue, I don't hate the idea of building in some fail-safe that enables us to, by majority vote, call for more time on the, on the floor for public testimony. Is that something we can do even if we leave the discre, the language in around being at the discretion of the president? Or do we need to build language in then that says, the discretion of the president, except by majority vote of the council? Does that, is my question clear? My statement? Okay.
I don't accept that for this reason. We, during the sanctuary, we had 800 people at the Bentley School. It was a city council meeting. We've had meetings here where the city council president has said that everyone is going to get a specific time and they've timed it, but at the Bentley School, it would have gone on for five days if there wasn't some kind of, something done and, and it has to be initiated by the council president, is my point. Because otherwise, you're going to have a debate on something before we've actually started the council meeting.
Well, can I just also, hold on, this may cover it. I think you can move to suspend this rule. A city counselor could move to suspend the rule. It would be up for a vote. That would be your opportunity as a body to overrule the president.
The one caveat of that is?
Yes.
Is any council has the right to object. So, if someone moves to waive the rules, any single council can object to the motion to waive the rules and then it cannot be voted on.
Right. And that's my point. And I, if I may respond to the Ward Five Counselor, I, I don't think, so, as I understood, your initial motion was to extend to 30 minutes or at least longer than the 15, if more than 15 were there. So, the spirit of that in my mind is to give more space for more public representation. I am not opposed to having some time limitation built into the rules, absolutely. I'm not saying five days with 800 people input is like where we should land. I'm just saying, does it make sense to have some time limited option or to give the majority of the counselors here some, to enable them to have, to have some say in whether or not there's been really sufficient time spent for public input on the floor? So, and I, and again, I, you know, I could, on this one, I can be waived either way. I just, I just, looking forward, you know, we never know who's going to be standing up there in 10 years' time and I would, though I am very comfortable with all of the other items that we have at the discretion of the president, I just, I just wonder if I wanted to offer some opportunity for, for council majority vote to, to somehow engage, further allow for more engagement. Thanks.
Counsel McLean.
Thank you, Counsel President. Just sort of tying up the comments that I've heard, I might suggest a friendly amendment that we proceed with allowing it to be at the discretion of the council president as well as majority vote of the council, but make the extension to a time definite. And that way, everybody knows whether the, whether the choice is made by the president or whether it's done by a vote of the council, everybody knows exactly what the period of time will be, that public comment will be extended and then it will end.
So, let me see if this works. So, the last sentence is, "Public testimony portion shall not exceed 15 minutes, extended at the discretion of the president, or to time definite by majority vote of the council." Does that cover it?
Do we want to name the time?
That, that seems like it's only limiting to a definite time for majority vote of the council, but not the president.
Well, so...
Is that your intent?
Well, sure. If I, if as a president, if we have 15 people sign up for public testimony and I feel like it's an important enough issue that they should have their time, then I'm just going to let them go. I don't know how long, I mean, if it takes 35 minutes, I'm not going to cut off the last person. I think this is a tricky one. It's why I think the League of Women Voters initially thought that they should have no time limit and that, you know, there's tools used where the president says, okay, we have 25 people signed up, you all get 60 seconds, period. There's ways to manage it. So, it's really what you guys think. I think in the past, the president has managed the time given the list. And remember, we have a list. It's not a free-for-all, you have to sign up. So, we know what we're dealing with as far as the list goes. So, Counsel McCarthy.
I will say, I've been here when that public comment period has lasted well over an hour and a half. And it occasionally happens. It depends on what the issue is and no one has ever not said that they couldn't. But the other thing we all have to remember is we're, we're a legislative body that it's here to act on issues that are in front of us. And obviously, people want to make comments about that. There's many ways that they can reach out to us. And in most, I would say, 99% of the actions we take before we take them are in committee on some of the bigger stuff. So, they have the ability to come to committee. I mean, sometimes it's their, you know, their last attempt to try to get their point across, which is totally respectful and understandable, but that's why they originally, it was set at 15 minutes because it's, we're, at that point, we're here to act. And, I mean, and I respect the people want, you know, the people want to have their opinions heard, which is, but at some point, it's up to the discretion of who's running the meeting and at this case, it's the president. I know, and prior, prior years when I was president, I've had people come up to me and said, I was trying to park my car. I showed up at 6:35. The clerk wouldn't let me sign up to, to speak, but can, I'm told that you can allow that. And it didn't even matter to me which side of the issue they were on. They made it a good faith attempt to get here. The rule says by 6:30, but if someone's walking into the clerk's office at 6:35 because they got stuck in traffic or couldn't find a place to park, I am not going to deny, I would, I'd never denied anyone that, that I can remember the right to, to speak. So, it's just, those are the rules and it falls under discretion of the president. It doesn't specifically state that anywhere, but the overall general running of a council meeting falls under the guidelines of the president and the president has control. So, the president has broad-based powers to, to determine what they want to do with any, any part of the agenda. So...
And I do think it's important to have a set time so that you know that it's not the main purpose of the meeting. The public comment generally should happen in, in the committees where the things are discussed with no time limit. Counsel Cohen.
Yeah. I'm very comfortable with the way you amended it. I also want to say that the council actually elects the council president. So, we're putting our faith, in a way, into that person and this isn't the only thing that the council president discretion is, is used for. So, I, I think we should just accept the amendment as you made it.
Counsel Watson felt.
Yeah, I was just going to comment that it reflects exactly what, what my point was. Thank you.
So, do we want to keep all of that extended at the discretion of the president or to time definite by majority vote of the council?
I'm comfortable with that, yes. If Counsel Cohen, it's his motion, but, yes.
So, Counsel Cohen moved, seconded by Counsel Watson felt. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries. Okay.
Counsel...
Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Cohen.
Yeah. Number three, I move that we add, in lieu of signing the roster, an email to the city clerk is sufficient.
Sorry, I did not look at this. Hold on.
So, number three is, is doing public testimony.
Okay. So, I will point out that there's now an online form as well, which has been used for the past couple of weeks. So, this needs to reflect the online form or appearing in City Hall.
And an email to the council, to the city clerk. All the agendas say that you can email the city clerk.
It says that you can still email?
Yep.
Okay. So, it needs to reflect emailing, online, and in-person. All right. I can work on the wording on that if no one is opposed to that. Okay. Anything else on that? Number 26? Okay. Number 27 is acting on mayor's nominations. Counsel Ricardi.
Thank you, Madam President. I think this is where I, sorry that I'm not prepared. I think this is where I wanted to, it doesn't explicitly call out that the mayor's nomination be sent to committee of the whole, but I would like to throw that out there as an option that nominations by the mayor to boards and commissions be sent to committee of the whole and not to be acted upon until the next meeting after such nominations are referred out of committee. And so, the, our timeline would still be the same. We could have a standing committee of the whole meeting before the next council meeting where the nominations must take place. I'm not, which is, is in, in the next item. This doesn't specifically call out, though, which nominations, if it's nominations to boards and commissions or nominations to city positions. Not quite sure if it needs to be clarified. Department, the department head nominations.
Right. Counsel McCarthy.
With, with regards to like nominations to boards or anything like that, that's usually why it's held under the rules. And if someone want, did not want to hold something under the rules, it's held under the rules, but at the same time, then someone could make a conemotion and refer it to committee if at that point, it's being held under the rules. So, there's a two-week time period of which any member of the council can reach out to that individual that's being appointed to have a conversation with them after they read their resume and question them or ask them questions. Or if they happen to be, if you're a ward council and the person happens to live in your ward and you haven't had the opportunity to meet or speak to that person, they may be recently moved in, or that gives you the opportunity to have that two-week period to have, have a conversation. I have seen it where appointments have been referred to committee. But this rule was actually revisited and actually looked at and that's why when you look at the agendas, the way that they word it now is it's held under the rules because the rule says it was before they were bringing in, before appointments would come in and they were being acted upon and at the same time, they were brought in. So, that's what it gives the council an ability, the way it's written currently, to have that two-week period. And if during that two-week period, if someone has, I've seen some counselors over the years have some objections, I guess, to someone's appointment or reappointment and have referred the matter to committee to have a conversation in committee about someone's appointment. But that's why it's there.
Counsel Ricardi.
Thank you. I guess I'll just expand on that, that my reason for wanting to send these to committee. I have actually never seen one sent to committee and it, it can create almost an aggressive posture by sending one to committee since it's just been kind of stamp and go. That's one reason. The other reason is out of respect for the nominees, as opposed to having 11 people reach out to them individually, have 11 individual conversations of why you want to do this, I think, and they have to be at the second meeting anyway. I think it might be time-sensitive to them as well to just, and also as a way for all of us to get to know the nominees, because not every, I would be interested if everyone reaches out to every nominee and has a conversation before they vote on it. I think this is, just makes it a non-aggressive way to get to meet our, our nominees and have conversations.
Counsel Watson felt.
I want to add a little bit to what Counsel Ricardi just said. I absolutely agree with her and I'm going to go even a little bit further and say that there has been, I think even in this last year, just some discomfort in some instances about that concept of stamp and go. I mean, you know, I think we all unilaterally understand and respect that these are volunteer positions, but many of the, and also many of them have been in position for many, many years and there were different feelings about that citywide. I, I would agree, this idea that, that Counsel Ricardi has articulated as sort of non-aggressive really does take the heat off of all of us as well and it's a diplom, it's a diplomatic move to enable us to engage with some folks where there may be just some discomfort that we ourselves aren't comfortable with. So, let alone, you know, not about a specific person, but just feeling like that pressure to stamp and go. So, I would welcome, I would welcome that amendment. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do you have any wording for it, Counselor?
It's really just adding the words, "be sent to the committee of the whole and shall not be acted upon until the next meeting." Then technically, procedurally, as a council, we would have our committee of the whole meetings before the next council meeting, but I don't think that piece needs to be in the rules.
Right. It's a procedural...
So, it's literally just adding, "be sent to committee of the whole and shall not be acted upon," is sent to the correct language? Referred to, referred to committee of the whole?
So, nominations made by the mayor shall not be act, shall, okay, shall, okay, so nominations made by the mayor shall be referred to the committee of the whole and not be acted upon until the next meeting, correct? Okay. What about renominations? Just before I... Counsel Watson felt.
I'll bite this one and say, yes, including renominations, or reappointments. Thank you.
Reappointments.
Yeah, reappointments.
To board, and this is boards and commit, boards and committees. Counsel Ricardi.
Yes, I agree with that too because there are often times as well where we want to have those conversations and plus council changes and you don't know the members of the committee, so it's a great way to get to meet them. I, I'm kind of thinking, though, that it could get extremely cumbersome and, again, volunteers and adding a lot onto their plates. I'm wondering if we, so, I just, I guess, want to note that we can refer it to committee or refer it to committee of the whole, take up the matter in committee of the whole, but we're not requiring the nominee to be at the committee of the whole? Because a, a reappointment is not required to be at the council meeting. So, that's right for nominee, first-time nominations. So that's right for nominee, first-time nominations, I think it's an easy ask to be at our committee of the whole meeting because you already have to be at that council meeting. For the renominations, I think it's a little tougher ask on to the volunteers of our city to be at that meeting. That's all.
Counsel McCarthy.
I understand what the intent is, but the, the issue I will see with it is you're going to bring, if you're going to bring someone into the council chambers for a committee meeting and then you're opening it up for public comment, if someone has a personal issue or didn't like the way someone may have voted on a project, now you're going to open it up, that volunteer who is just serving the city's board or whatever it may be, is now going to be opened up to the potential to be questioned and/or commented about in an open public setting about their abilities and their qualifications to perform something. And it just, it, it could be, it could be cumbersome and troublesome that someone who has put their name forth in, in good faith and obviously what we're not seeing is the other side of this is, as we all saw it when we appointed some people to the tree commission, on the administrative side, they're vetting out, they're vetting out the resumes and the people that are requesting to serve on whatever board or commission it may be, and they're making their choice and putting someone in front of us. And that, that, they've done their due diligence and it's then our due diligence to do our own research and homework on that. But when you, especially on a reappointment, if someone has an issue with somebody, I think it just could be troublesome. That's the way I look at it. I mean, I'll go with the, with the will of the body as I understand it, but I'm just, we're creating another layer to the appointment and it could be very cumbersome and it could open up to if, it could open up to a whole series of things in committee. That's all I'm saying. I'll leave it at that.
Counsel Watsonfeld.
Thank you. I think, going back to the spirit of my original comment, I think this is especially important for reappointments. I, I think that there is some public sentiment and I think that it is the way that is designed, that reappointments are stamped even easier than new appointments. And that may not always be appropriate. So whether it is a matter of practice, because it is important for the integrity of the reappointment, the integrity of boards and commissions year over year over year, I think that, you know, we do it for the city clerk, we do it for the tree commission, we do it for all of those other roles that we do. I think, you know, I take the, the integrity of the boards and commissions, you know, really, really seriously. And I think that, you know, 10, 15 years of, of a single person's reappointment by stamped, you know, vote of the council, it's not a bad idea to bring them back in. And I, and I hear exactly your point, Ward One Counselor, I absolutely do. I think that the point that it could be administratively cumbersome as well as, is extremely unfair and, and right. But I do think that this question of review is important at the time of reappointment. So I think if, if I'm looking back over every conversation I've had with constituents about boards and commission appointments, it's never about the first person, the new person appointed, right? It's always about reappointments. And that would be where the review should maybe take place. So I just wanted to, to further my position on that. But I appreciate the administrative component for sure.
Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Marsillo. I respectfully disagree with Ward Two Counselor. I agree with Counsel McCarthy. I moved here in 2008 and I served on one board for 12 years, including being the chair for nine. I served on another board for nine years, including being the vice chair for seven. And when I was reappointed to the second one, there was a city counselor in this chamber who stood up and screamed at me, I think Counsel McCarthy remembers, and there's a current board chair who another counselor made an issue of before she was reappointed. And so I do feel like, as best we can, we now, and hopefully this will continue, we get contact information, which I don't think was done before, and we're able to interact with people. But I believe making this public can lead to someone who has served on a board for a period of time as a volunteer, in some cases like the planning board, it's, it's a really extensive amount of work. And, you know, for them to be treated the way some of these people, I'm not even including mine, but the way this other person was treated a few years ago, I think is inappropriate and I think it will lead to that. So I feel like it can always, you know, to have these kind of conversations the way we do in private can lead to a better result.
Counsel McLean.
Thank you, Council President. So I'm going to go back the other way and say that I concur with the Ward Two Counselor. I think reappointments are in fact the place where we need the most amount of discussion and review. I agree that that tends to be the location where people get the most discomfort, where there's the most concern, this person has just been here and been here and been here and is this a matter of inertia or is this really the appropriate person to do it? But I do, I do hear the concern of the other counselors about what can happen in a public forum and I actually think it is not just an issue for nominees, but it can be an issue for us as well. I do know that, you know, during, during the appointments for the tree commission and community preservation that the Ward One Counselor referenced, everybody, I think, conducted themselves in a professional fashion. All of the nominees had an opportunity to answer to the same kind of questions, but we didn't really have an opportunity to deliberate as a body before we had to make choices between nominees who exceeded the slots that we were considering. And it's a really difficult thing to do when somebody has just stood in front of you and you've essentially interviewed them to sit them down, have them listen to the other interviews and then talk about them in front of them. And I do think it's important we have some process for reviewing that. I think committee of the whole is as good a location as any, but I do think we probably need to give some further thought into where we go from there and actually getting the appointments done, because that conversation, I think, got uncomfortable for just about everybody in the room, even though we were all conducting ourselves appropriately, it's just, it's a difficult process to do in that kind of public way.
So right now, renominations are just voted on at the meeting. And I'm wondering if some of this could go away if they were held under the rules as, as a nomination? And I'm not actually sure where in the, in the rules it says to, that they are voted on right away, which is, I think, part of my concern is we don't have any time. And, and to hold someone who's being renominated, a specific person, is a very pointed thing to do and, and it's not what anyone wants to do, right? Counsel McCarthy.
I would, I would wholeheartedly agree with that and I'll take it to the other side of it is, I don't, I haven't, it's somewhere in here. Now you'll see a wave of appointments and reappointments coming in, especially the reappointments. And the reason why they're, they are, actually they're on a spreadsheet, is because previously appointments just weren't getting reappointed. If you're in there, you just kept doing your thing, you were on the board of commission, your appointment was up in 2019, you're still sitting there serving. There's a rule that says no, the administration has to bring that reappointment back in front of us. And it's for whatever time period is, two years, three years, whatever it is, only because you can't leave an appointment hanging over someone's head. If someone's in good faith is serving that board of commission, then if, you know, and we've all seen it, we've all seen people that we may, think they're doing a decent job and then the administration thinks that because of whatever reason that they're not, they, they decide not to bring that appointment or reappointment in front of, back in front of us. So I understand where you, what the thinking is about the checks and balances, but if the intent is to try to do this, then you're going to have to come up with some, on a Thursday night meeting before a council meeting, we have a standing meeting of finance and a standing meeting of licentious legal affairs. And if you're going to make a standing meeting of the committee of the whole to deal with appointments and reappointments, depending upon what month it is or how many reappointments are in front of you, that meeting could take a while. I mean, especially if no one has, so that's why, and I understand the argument and which I totally respect, is because I've seen it happen to individuals where a city counselor has a specific issue with some member or some reappointment, has referred that appointment to committee. And it does become, it can become contentious. And I, I respect that. And it does take the burden off the council, but what now you're doing is you're potentially putting the burden on those nine, 99 out of 100 appointments or reappointments that no one has an issue with because they're doing their job and they're a volunteer and the one person that someone may have a question about, it gets spotlighted, but it's difficult now that you're putting, you're trying to add a layer to the, to the way it's done. And because as we all say it all the time, they're just volunteers. They're doing, they're doing what we're asking them to do, so it's difficult. But I understand what the intent is, I really do. But it's how you, how we come up with a process, how to manage that, because that will be the difficult part about it.
I'm wondering if we can, if this makes sense, to just change section 27 to say acting on mayor's appointments or reappointments, appointments slash reappointments, which would hold them under the rules, all of them. And then if we might want to use this year to continue to use the phone numbers that are given to us to reach out to all appointments and reappointments and use that two-week or more period to bring any sort of issues that we have to the administration and try and work out things before it comes up for a vote. It's, it's an option, it doesn't get people in front of a committee. Counsel Presnisky.
Thank you, Counsel Chair. The, there's an old saying, if it's, if it's not broken, don't fix it. There's no perfect answer for this, because it just plays into a lot of different factors. I understand both sides of the story, we should be vetting our people and getting to know them a little bit better. However, there's a vetting process before it gets to the city council, that we trust on others to make these nominations in good faith and that these people have particular skills and interests in doing their jobs and doing it right. And I think history has told us that the appointments and reappointments have been very satisfactory. I don't think that we've had any problems. And if there has been problems, they get taken care of behind the scenes and there are no reappointments or nominations for the next, for the next time. I just, I just feel that we're opening up a can of worms and adding in a lot of work to the, to the council by going off in different directions and again putting some of these people who are volunteers through the wringer unnecessarily. I trust the people before, before us to have done that for us and, and keeping it smooth and as easy for the volunteers as possible. Thank you.
Counsel Hapworth.
Thank you, Council President. I think we're all saying the same things here, which is that these appointments and reappointments are important and that we should take time and effort to ensure that we get the right, the right people in the right positions. I think the, the issue that we run into is administrative, which has already been referenced that this, I don't know if there's a standing meeting, I don't know when that happens. The unintended, potential unintended consequences, which having somebody before the council and having it be an open forum to potentially go in a direction we don't want it to go, I think is, is a real concern and we don't want to go down that path. I like the, the suggestion around just adding reappointments at the front of this, so just saying reappointments and nominations made by the mayor shall not be acted upon until the next meeting. And then at the end, could we add both reappointments and nominations may be sent to committee at, to the committee of the whole at the, at a majority vote?
I mean, you can do that anyways.
We can do it anyways, I don't know if it's, I'm just curious as to, it seems like it should be a case-by-case basis, it shouldn't be a rule that we, we force upon. And maybe as, all of us should just take a look at this and, and consider doing that more often, but putting it into the rules, I think, potentially puts us into a difficult position.
Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, Madam President. I mean, I don't want to get too stuck on this tonight, because I know we have other stuffs to continue, I think we've all kind of set our piece. I do think adding nominations, renominations, making that together, I think that would take a big step forward of adding renominations to be held under the next rule or until the next meeting, because that does give us time. And then we could always go back to see if we want to add it to be an automatic referral to the committee of the whole. I do want to say, I came up with this because I watched the Beverly City Council meetings and they have this before their standing meeting and they have all their nominees in front of them and they, it's like a quick two-minute thing. So I think if we could get into a good cadence of not having 17 nominees in one agenda item or, you know, a standing committee meeting ahead, or ahead of the meeting, I think it's doable. I don't think it's necessarily too much work or a time chunk or anything, but it is a change in process. I'm just trying to think of ways that we can overcome those kind of issues that we have seen in the past and also never knowing who the, or not knowing who the administration is or, I mean, in general, you don't know what the nominees are going to be in front of you. So it was looking for another way to, to make it less aggressive, as I said. But I do think at least adding the renominations in there would be a good first step. So I would, I guess, modify my original motion of being referred to the committee of the whole to have it be nominations and renominations by the mayor shall not be acted upon until the next meeting.
Second by Counsel Watsonfeld. All those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries. Thank you. Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Marsillo. And I apologize, something caught my eye that I hadn't when I read this earlier on the item above it, about public comment in 26C. Just the spot where it says citizens providing testimony under this section, just anything, I'm just not comfortable where it says, refers to citizens and that, you know, I, I would think it should be community members or something. It just to me gives the impression that you have to be a citizen to be giving the comment. And like I said, I apologize that. I backed up one, I just saw it, but we moved on.
Which, is the motion to change it to members of the public?
Yes, yeah. Or if anyone has a better suggestion for languaging, I welcome that.
Counsel Watsonfeld.
Well, I'm just thinking perhaps resident?
It doesn't have to be a resident to give public testimony.
Then a member of the public would be the replacement. Yeah, thank you.
Second.
So the motion by Counsel Merkel is to change in section 26C, number four? Is citizen anywhere else?
I think it's in three.
Okay, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, it is four, sorry.
Number four, which starts citizens, change it to members of the public.
Should we, I don't know how many times in this document the word citizen is used. Should we make a motion to make a blanket change for citizen?
Change from citizen.
To members of the public? Yes.
So moved by Counsel Watsonfeld, seconded by Counsel Merkel. All those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries. Thank you. That makes it cleaner and I will check that out. Counsel McLean.
Thank you, Council President. Just in that same section, I notice maybe it's a typo or continuity error, but A is blank completely?
Oh, I had pointed that out, yes.
So is something missing?
It's been marked out for many years, don't know why. I, yeah, I, I told Eileen she didn't need to spend time looking up what happened there, but we're just going to get rid of A and move everything up, or yeah, we're going to move everything up. Thank you. So we're on 27A now, appearance of nominees for positions before the council. I think my one suggestion here is after the word positions, except election precinct officers, I think we can strike that. We don't, yeah. Seconded? Second by Counsel Varela, all those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries. Thank you. Anything else in that section? Counsel McCarthy.
I will say on this one, since now, you know, we were in Zoom land for a while and typically what happens, you'll see Lisa Camerata or the mayor's chief of staff or somebody, anybody who's getting appointed to a city position, whether it be the finance director or whatever, they typically will bring that person around because they've gone through the hiring process. We're here to, but they usually bring that person around to meet us and introduce them to us so that the next first, it's not the first time you meet them when you have a problem, when you need to go to their office. They usually, we've seen, I mean, obviously anyone's seen it recently, but they usually will walk someone around and introduce them to everybody in the room before they're will walk someone around and introduce them to everybody in the room before they're appointed. So, and that's, once again, they've already gone through the hiring process. They've already gone through the interview process. HR's made, HR's made them their contract offer, whatever it is, and now they're coming to us for the final approval, so. But they, typically, that's what happens, is you'll see them, they'll be brought around to us to introduce us to them.
Yeah, I think I only saw that during the budget meetings, but probably the time. So were there any changes that need to happen to 27a? Okay. 28, committee generally, committees generally. In this one, we already added committee of the whole. Section 29, appointment of committee. Seeing none. 29a, president to name counselors to sit as members of boards or agencies. 29b, disposition of matters referred to committees. Section 29c, meetings of all committees to be audiotaped. This one, we have wording from the city solicitor to bring this up to date. So she added, ensuring that each of its meetings are audio and/or video recorded. Such recording shall be maintained until final minutes are approved or administrative use ceases, whichever occurs later. And that is to replace all of the other verbiage there about cassette tapes. Counsel Varela?
Thank you, President Marcello. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the edits from our city solicitor.
Counsel Watsonfeld?
Counsel President, under discussion?
Under discussion.
Do we need to, and I hate to be a nitpicky legal brain like this, but when we say and/or video, do we need to say video with sound? Because I don't want anyone thinking a, a recording without audio of us sitting here in these 11 seats is going to suffice. Like, I just am, just to be.
It's happened.
Right, right. Like, just to be really nitpicky clear about that.
So, so meetings are audio with or without video?
That would be, that would be right, yeah. Recorded with or without video? Preferably with.
Counsel Dominguez?
Thank you. I just wanted to refer, by adding the word technological means, I think that's covered. Any, any new device or anything that is in place, because time changed. Who knows what's going to be next after the videos and the stuff, because we're moving technological. So technological means, I think, cover more broadly.
So are you suggesting that we change wording?
Yeah, instead of having videos, sounds video, like the good counsel were to just refer.
I think her.
What technological means.
Yeah, I think her question was that it said audio and/or video. So the or could mean only video and not audio. And so really, the important part is the audio. So.
So I would just offer a friendly amendment to say audio or video and audio recording.
Audio or video and audio, right? Okay.
Video with audio or, and/or video and audio.
Right. Okay. So is this.
Accepted, thank you.
Okay. Counsel McCarthy?
Only, only because I haven't had the, I haven't sat on the Ola Committee in a couple of years, I guess my question would be, when we have to go into the anteroom for a hearing on someone's denial of a taxi operator, do we still use the tape recorder?
The last time we did.
Because we, the, when someone has, when someone has a hearing about their, obviously the hearing is in, because the divulging information, it goes to the anteroom. And there, if anyone hasn't experienced yet, it's right out of 1980. It's a cassette recorder that you put in, and I've been in the meetings where it's gone so long, everyone stop talking, we have to flip the tape over.
Or you forget to flip it, yes.
Or you get to flip it.
But that's covered by, the meetings are audio.
Okay.
And/or audio and video.
Because we've also, we've also taken votes in this chamber to go to the anteroom to discuss stuff that's, that is recorded. Okay.
Okay. So Counsel Varela made a, made a motion. It's been amended to include and/or video and audio. Is there a second? Seconded by Counsel Dominguez. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries. Section 30, report of finance committee required for action on appropriations. Anything there? Section 30a, ordinance is relative to traffic regulations to contain police traffic department recommendation. Pretty straightforward. Any issues? No. Section 30b, purchase of real property from the city. Counsel Rikardi?
Thank you, Madam President. So I reached out to the city solicitor on this one, just because we just recently did that new ordinance relative to the disposition ordinance recently filed with city council and passed just last month, I think, or October. And she reviewed that, and she also reached out to Ms. Chiancola. And Ms. Chiancola provided her opinion that this section essentially achieves the same objective within the ordinance that we just passed. The revised ordinance requires the city planner, the director of public property to consult with city department heads to determine if the land is underutilized, and it's covered in the section, a copy of the request shall be sent to the department having custody of the property, Engineering, Planning and Conservation Commission. So the ordinance that we have is a little more robust than this section. And there are several steps within the ordinance that we just passed where property can be disposed to a committee for conversation and additional information. It may be more advantageous for a committee meeting to occur after the council receives the report rather than before. So Amanda did recommend that if they're comfortable with the ordinance that we just adopted, which I hope we are, because it was just passed unanimously, she would recommend just removing this section, since the objectives are already covered within our ordinance. And that was run by the city solicitor, which she agrees. So I would move to strike this section.
Counsel Cohen? So Counsel Rikardi moves to strike, section 30b, seconded by Counsel Cohen. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries. Section 30c, application submitted to council for state or federal funds to be accompanied by document. Good? Okay. Duties of the clerk, section 31. Duties of the clerk, clerk pro tempore. Again, just gender neutral on that first section. Anything else? Section 32, presenting memorials and other papers to the council lying on the table. Do you know what memorials are? I meant to check with this, and I did not.
I've never seen one. I'll be 100%, unless it's phrased differently, I don't.
Yeah.
Until we check on the phrasing, I wouldn't.
I will, I will check on that. And if it's no longer pertinent.
It could be something we're doing, but it's not referenced as memorial, so I'm not really sure.
Yeah, I mean, either, so if somebody could make this motion, that I will follow up on this if it's needed, but the language needs updating, I will propose that, I will do that, I will update the language. If it's no longer necessary, then it will be struck. Not the whole thing, just that, memorials.
So moved.
Thank you. Motion made by Counsel Dominguez, seconded by Counsel McCarthy. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries. Section 33, suspension amendment of rules and orders. Any questions? Here we go. Cushings manual. Section 34, Counsel Rikardi?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we change this for Roberts Rules to govern. The rules of practice comprised in Roberts Rules shall govern the council in all cases which they are applicable and inconsistent with these rules.
Okay. So the motion is to change from cushions to Roberts. Can I give a, go ahead, Counsel Rikardi.
Sure, yeah, just to give a little background on that, I think the majority of our boards and commissions follow Roberts Rules, the departments within our cities follow Roberts Rules, I think the majority of America follows Roberts Rules. And in the spirit of making things a little easier to understand for the public, for counselors, I think it makes sense to move to Roberts Rules. Up for discussion.
Okay, and I will follow up, just because, and I recognize you in a moment, I did speak to the city clerk about this, and of course, she has concerns, but we talked through it. This is something that we can ease into. It's very similar. Cushings and Roberts are very similar. Also, we talked about the fact that we had training at the beginning of this year by someone from Salem State, and she is versed in Roberts Rules and had to learn cushions. And she mentioned at the meeting that there are very few changes, and they were, you know, very specific, and she understands them. So we can get help from her to make this change also. As far as we're concerned, this should be a pretty easy switch over. I don't think we'll have much at all to change. But from her point of view and her comfort level, you know, we will get training and we will all be trained in the differences, and which will also be a reminder of our rules. So I just wanted to put that out there. I have discussed this. Also, the city solicitor thinks that it is a good idea. The school committee follows Roberts Rules, and like Counsel Rikardi said, everyone else in the city follows Roberts Rules. You have to get the specific version of cushions to follow, which is from like 1928 or something, and you have to find it on eBay if you want the version, or you lose the one that the city solicitor gives you. So, yeah, it's just, I think, from my point of view, for public participation, for the public to be engaged in our meetings, it's a lot easier if they can Google Roberts Rules and get a cheat sheet and understand why we're doing what we're doing. And if they go to our rules and see cushions manual, it's, it's interesting when you Google cushions manual, so. But. Yes, yeah. Counsel Dominguez?
Thank you, Counsel President. I don't want to add anything else. You say perfectly, you say everything that I wanted to say. I mean, the main point to me was to refer to city clerk, which you did, and the city solicitor mentioned that we had all of these four corners and the new change that we might apply. I totally agree that the Roberts Rules might be more adequate for this time, but we wanted to make sure that we had everything in the rules and that we don't really jeopardize anything that legally speaking or functionally speaking that might create some issue in the, in the future. But you say it completely right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So Counsel Rikardi made a motion to change to Roberts Rules from cushions, seconded by Counsel Varela. Any further discussion or fear? I'm looking at the old man on the council here.
Yeah, the old man will just say, I spent 15 years learning those rules in Old English. I don't know, we can't teach an old dog new tricks, I guess.
Oh, yeah, we can, sure.
But whatever, it'll be fine. I've heard this argument many times, and I, I understand it's, you know, it was, for a while, it was nice being unique. But, you know, I think that it's, it's due, it's time. But I will miss some of the old rules, but some of them are so archaic, it's ridiculous.
You could probably have all the books, except for the one that Eileen wants to keep.
Actually, I, I have an old book, and I also have one of those ones that was referenced, the newer version. I bought one once, because Eileen didn't have enough to pass out at one point, so I bought one, then she'd find them, but it is what it is. I mean, I get it, so.
Okay. Counsel Rikardi?
I just wanted to add one more point. I feel, when it comes to the public participation piece, I get so many questions about this, like, why did you do something a certain way? And it's like that one rule that's different, and they like, you did it, you did it wrong. It's like, well, no. But so I just think with the public participation aspect of following in the meetings, and I'm excited to not have to wear a tie anymore in the meetings.
The last meeting, we will all be wearing ties. Okay, so the motion is made by Counsel Rikardi, seconded by Counsel Varela. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries 10 to 0. Let's see, so Section 35, rules of committees. Again, the wording was changed from mailed or delivered to their residences to emailed to their City of Salem email account. Oh, Counsel Rikardi? No? Okay. If somebody would like to make that motion? Counsel Rikardi makes the motion, seconded by Counsel Varela. All those in favor? All those opposed? Is there anything else in this section? Everything else is pretty much by the book. Section 36, discharging matters from committee. Seeing none. We did it. Okay. So I will, we, we voted to approve all these things. I will get the final wording and send it out. If there's any sort of a hiccup in what we have approved, I will also appoint, I'll also point that out. I think hopefully, we don't need to come back to vote on anything. We can just report this out, correct? To, yeah, everything that we write is going to be approved by the city solicitor, just to make sure. The stuff that we had done originally, she had no problem with, and she provided language for some new stuff. Would you like to keep it in committee and have another meeting? Is that what your, Counsel McCarthy?
Well, there's a follow-up to that. I guess my, if we were to keep it in committee and have a scheduled meeting before the council meeting on Thursday, maybe at 6:45 or something, or whatever time works in the time plane, that way, that way the document can be presented to us all. We can read the strike through beforehand, and then if anyone wants to propose anything right then, then we can, and then, then we can make a referral to move it out for adoption or whatever. Because this document doesn't get adopted until, we can move for the changes, but it doesn't get adopted until we adopt the new rules come the first meeting in January.
And it's only one vote, right? I'm pretty sure it's just one vote.
It's one vote. Should be one. I would double-check with that, but as far as I know, it's one.
Okay. Counsel Watsonfeld?
Can, is that a motion? Can I second that?
Yes.
All right, I'm going to second that.
Wait, what was, I'm sorry.
To keep the matter in committee, schedule a meeting on Thursday prior to the regular council meeting.
Do we have time?
Yes.
Okay. 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 All right, so, so Counsel McCarthy.
I have a moment.
Right, right. Counsel McCarthy moves to keep the matter in committee, seconded by, seconded by Counsel Watsonfeld. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries. And before I forget, carrying matters over. So these are the items that we have in the committee of the whole, meeting with destination Salem. We're keeping it in committee, yes. Move to keep it in committee. Counsel Dominguez? Moves to keep it in committee, seconded by Counsel Watsonfeld. All those in favor? Matter carries. The second one, meet to discuss ARPA funds and program. This could go either way. Counsel McLean?
I'll move to keep this in committee as well.
Counsel McLean moves to keep it in committee, seconded by Counsel McCarthy. All those in favor? Motion carries. Meet for presentation on the proposed offshore wind marshalling facility on Salem Harbor. Counsel Dominguez moves to keep it in committee, seconded by Counsel Watsonfeld. All those in favor? Counsel Cohen is opposed? Okay. Matter, are you, I'm sorry, are you also? Is anyone else opposed? I took that as, okay. The matter carries. Report from planning regarding affordable dwelling units. I think we can discharge. Yes? Counsel Varela?
Move to discharge.
Move to discharge, seconded by Counsel Rikardi. All those in favor? The matter carries. Discuss council rules and orders. Woo-hoo.
We've moved to keep it in committee already.
What do we do with this?
You don't carry it over. You're taking it up the machine.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to carry it over.
You just, just.
Yeah.
But that's at the next meeting.
Yeah.
So we're, we'll, we'll take no action on this. And then the last one is the framework of a tenant protection ordinance. Counsel Watsonfeld?
You go ahead.
I motion we carry this forward.
Carry it forward.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Dominguez. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries. Well, geez, we hardly got rid of anything here. We will take some public comment now. We will take some public comment now. Let me see, where are my participants? If anyone has some public comment on either of the rules, well, on the rules, you can use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I will take a motion. Counsel McCarthy moves to adjourn, all those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries. Thank you very much.